All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our work session for February eighth, two thousand twenty-two. We've called the order. Jamie, could you please read the sunshine statement?
Be advised that proper notice has been given by the township council in accordance with the sunshine law in the following manner. Notice advertised in the Burlington County Times and Camden Carrier Post on January twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, and posted on the bulletin board on the same date. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jenny?
Here.
Ms. Pareo?
Here.
Mr. Lyon?
Here.
Mr. Burrow?
Here. Thank you. First up, we have our resolutions. This is resolution two thousand twenty-two dash forty, appointing Joseph B. Bellina as the fund commissioner. Can you get a motion in a second, please?
No move, Tom Lyon. Second, Lynn Jenny.
Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
I.
Mr. Jenny?
I.
Ms. Pareo?
I.
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Burrow?
I. The eyes have it. The resolution's adopted. Next up, we have resolution two thousand twenty-two dash forty-one, appointing Brian Mullen as a safety coordinator. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, Lynn Jenny?
Second.
I'll second Marlo Smith.
Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Jenny?
I.
Ms. Pareo?
I.
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Burrow?
I. The eyes have it. The resolution is adopted. Next up, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash forty-two, appointing Kimberly Bogie as the claims coordinator. I'm chain of motion.
Motion, Lynn? Second, Tom Lyon.
Um, and Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
I.
Mr. Jenny?
I.
Ms. Pareo?
I.
Mr. Lyon?
I.
Mr. Burrow?
I. The eyes have it. Uh, the resolution carries. Next up is resolution two thousand twenty-two dash forty-three. This is appointing Jamie Eggers, council clerk, as the alternate fund commissioner.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Uh, Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
I.
Mr. Jenny?
I.
Ms. Pareo?
Virginia?
I.
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Burrow?
I. The eyes have it. The resolution is adopted. Next up is resolution two thousand twenty-two dash forty-four, establishing the two thousand twenty-two quarterly sewer billing. Block nine lot thirty-three Burke and Burke at Hunter's Glen LLC. I'll entertain a motion.
So move, Tom Lyon. Second, Lynn Jenny.
Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
I.
Mr. Jenny?
I.
Ms. Pareo?
I.
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Burrow?
I. The eyes have it. Resolution is adopted. Next up, we have our motion. This is a motion. Pointing David Kalmes to the zoning board as an alternate one for a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll make a motion. Second, Lynn.
Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
I.
Mr. Jenny?
I.
Ms. Pareo?
I.
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Burrow?
I. The eyes have it. The motion is carried. Next up, we have a motion authorizing the payment of bills and all purchases made under the cooperative purchasing agreement.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Um, is that Virginia? Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
I.
Mr. Jenny?
I.
Ms. Pareo?
I.
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Burrow?
I. Guys have it. Motion carried. And now to our work session portion of the agenda. And first up, we have a presentation from our green team. My understanding is Deb, who is, uh, Deb Hammett will be presenting to us this evening. Deb, can you hear us? And you're there. I know you're with, um, Al. Do you guys have anyone else you want in on this, this portion of it? I see some other members of the green team. I don't know if they're just here to listen, but. Um, that's perfectly fine. If there's anyone you want to present, just let us know and we can get them into this room. Okay?
Okay.
Um.
You ready?
I think we're good. Council's ready to go.
Okay. Well, thank you for allocating time for the green team to share what we've, uh, been working on. Uh, we sent an annual report to Jamie and I believe she distributed to you. But tonight is about, really about our community forestry report, and we wanted to give an update on that. So our first forestry plan was submitted to the state in two thousand eighteen, and it's supposed to be a five-year plan, but I guess because of COVID. The state automatically extended everybody's plans until two thousand twenty-seven. But we are still required, in order to maintain our accreditation, to submit an annual report and fulfill the, uh, training requirements. Um, which we more than satisfied this year. We, um, had three additional green team members get core trained certified. So now we have. Two core-trained municipal employees, Brian Mullen and, um, Mike Kramer. And we have four active, uh, green team volunteers that are core-trained. One of the big things that we accomplished was we, um, completed the inventory of our parks and playgrounds. Um, we, we, uh, created a Google map, and I kind of wanted to show it. So if Jamie can let me, she can share screen. Do I just, oh, okay, you have to do it.
No, I think you can do it. It should be on the bottom of your screen somewhere.
Host is disabled. Okay, got it.
Okay, sorry.
Deb, Deb, while you're getting that going, is there, is this link public anywhere that, is it on your website and or our website?
It is not yet, and we wanted to show it to council. It can be made public or it can be kept as you can have access to it if you have the link. So we haven't really done anything with that. Um, but we went out, we did our invent, we inventoried the trees in our parks and playgrounds, and I guess we basically, uh, assessed three hundred and twenty-two trees. And of those, twenty-one are standing dead trees, and then there's another seventy-one that are in pretty poor condition. Um, and they're spread throughout the town in, as part of our inventory. And I guess I kind of wanted to show you what, how. Uh, let me, sorry, this will make you kind of dizzy sick, I guess. Um. I'm like, I'm trying to figure out where I am. Okay.
Community.
Um, okay, so this is, uh, at Notre Dame, and each of our trees, we went out and we evaluated the species. So we have it listed here. The diameter at breast height, which is a standard term of art, the condition, and. The most important part, we have a photograph of every one of these trees. All right, now I got to figure out which one I close. Okay. Um, I wanted to show the hazardous trees. And, uh, again, you can see, these are the ones, uh, this worked pretty good. Okay, so these are trees that are not dead. But they're in pretty bad shape for any number of reasons. These on Notre Dame, we're looking for evidence of like holes in the trees or. Mushrooms, fungi growing on the trees, which is a real good indication that there's not good things going on. Um. This would be really useful, and I guess I want to kind of share a crazy little story, but Al and I were out doing the inventory at the grand. At the same time, um, the contractors were out there doing the prep work for the traffic calming measures. So they've removed three trees. They're not in the inventory because when we got there, they were already gone. Uh, but this tree was left standing. And it's dead. It's an ash, it's a dead ash tree. Um, there was another dead ash tree standing. This was probably in worse condition. Uh, you know, there's no leaves on this, and this, you, you know, when the traffic calming, what was that, September, October? So there should have still been a lot of leaves on the trees. So the advantage of having an inventory like this is if there's other work going on. Uh, we had the equipment and the manpower out there at that time, and it would have been great to be able to have, uh, taken out those two trees. Um.
If I may, Deb, I'm Joe Bellina. Uh, we may be doing some workout on Notre Dame, uh, later this year. So perhaps you just point those trees out to us. That'd be great.
Uh, the inventory is, it can be publicly available. And like I said, what, what we found was, um. The work in the grand, it wasn't really meant, I mean, we weren't doing work in the parks, and it really was street work, but the trees were there. Some trees had to be taken out for the project, and it just would have been good to take the other ones because the equipment was there, the people were there. Um, but I think that's, I'm just like trying to get out of here. I want to stop sharing. Oh, there it is. Okay. Because I think we're good with that. But we have an, oh, never mind. I want to, I want to show one more thing. I'm sorry, I.
Why are you doing that? That, I think, if you could get that link, definitely Joe and Jim for sure, and.
Absolutely.
They're, you know, they know the projects that are coming and going, and there's certain opportunities, uh, you know, where they can get the, whoever the vendor is to take out a tree, perhaps.
Um, yes, that would be great. So the other thing we wanted to show is that we have been planting trees, and we've done pretty well. There's two kinds of trees that we plant, and I'm going to say we planted trees that are bald and burlapped. So these are ones that we actually purchased. And they're pretty big trees, and they're doing fairly well. Um, but we also planted seedlings, and those are like those little, little things that are running around out there, and some of them. This is my favorite seedling. This is a seedling that we planted in two thousand nineteen. Looks pretty good.
Planting that.
Was that?
I remember planting that with the voice.
While it was there with the voice.
Okay, okay, yeah. And, and it, I mean, it's done really well, and we're really pleased with that. So one of the things that we've done is that we talked to Erica D. Michelle at the high school. And asked for her to make us, you know, have the Fab Lab create some, uh, tree tags so that we can actually label each of the trees. With the, um, common name genus species in the year of planted. Um, under our forestry report, one of the other big accomplishments we had this year was the ordinance that was adopted by council in December. Um, so we're really excited about that, and we are ready, willing to assist in any way in dealing with implementation. Our old ordinance was the reason we were, we were rejected by Tree City USA. Um, and most of the information that is, uh, forms the basis of our application for Tree City is contained in our, the annual forestry report. Um, there's one, one issue, or we would have had it ready to go to be signed tonight. We have a, a little longer timeline for that. Um, is that we're supposed to have a tree committee, and obviously we do tree stuff. Um, but we'd love to have somebody from council if they would be interested to join us every once in a while when we talk trees. Um. But that's it. We need to put in the names of who's on the tree committee. Does anybody want to do it, Lynn?
Lynn, you're muted, but I think that's a yes.
Okay, good. That would be great, and.
I would be, Deb. Thank you.
Okay, um, and we'll be joining, uh, Riverton and Moorestown, who have been tree cities for over thirty years. So it's kind of one of those exciting things that you see the signs when you get into a town that they're tree city. So we're hoping that we get that done for us.
That'd be great.
The other thing that we do is we celebrated Arbor Day, and this Arbor Day, this past Arbor Day, uh, in two thousand twenty-one. We planted seven new trees, and I guess a couple of them were planted at the municipal building, and we were very lucky. We had. Some council representation there, and we had Del Ram Middle School students came over and helped. Um. So we're, we're really. That was a really good thing. Um. We, we hope that with the, the map to see, uh, one of the challenges that we have is that we are removing trees faster than we're able to plant them. So we're hoping that the tree bank gets lots of money and that we will be able to purchase some more trees and get them planted. Um. And a few other things that we wanted to kind of talk to council about is one of the things, um, we'd like to do is a diversity survey. We did this in two thousand fifteen. Of all the appointments that council makes for boards and committees, um. It's a Google form. We just needed to go out to the members of the various boards and committees, the zoning board, planning board, RAC. And we'll just compile the data. It's sort of, I, I want to say, I'd like to say it's anonymous, but. It's as anonymous as it can be because we're not collecting, uh, email addresses or names. Uh, we want to put it together. We did it in two thousand fifteen. We provided council with a lot of recommendations and. Um, I'm pleased to report the recommendations that we made. It looks like council implemented almost all of them, which is, I think, really good. Um, and I guess there's a couple more things. We've liked to work with council to do a sustainable land use pledge, which is just a resolution. And a couple ordinances, one that supports rooftop solar. We're halfway there because we changed the fee structure to be consistent with the way. The state recommends that we do fees for rooftop solar and electric vehicle charging. And we would love if council would look at the actions on the Sustainable Jersey website, and if there's anything you'd like us to work on or would like to see implemented in town, we'd be very interested. And unless you have questions, that's it. Oh, Gary, we, we need Gary to sign the forestry report, which is due to the state.
I'm sure.
That's okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure he'd be willing to do that. I think, Deb, thank you for all the work you guys do in the green team and all the members, uh, for all the work. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes. I know you guys are working. You're still working. We had that huge lift with the tree ordinance, right? And you guys are still working on the donor program. We're, we're still working on the framework of that, right? Because I know there's some residents who've asked about that. Um, and the other thing that we've recently kind of plugged through the gambit was, um, the community garden, right? That we have a concept plan kind of in the works. So I think you should nudge us and make sure we keep that on our radar. Budget season's coming up, you know, let's, let's keep that on the, the top of our priority list. Um, it may not happen this budget cycle. It may not, we know, but let's just see what, you know, don't let that lapse. So be the, uh, the nudge in, in our behind.
There was one other ask that we had, and that is, um. We would really, and, and hearing that we're doing some work in Notre Dame, um, we'd really like to work with the engineer's office and develop some landscape designs on what trees. Take out what trees to replant with, um, so that we're ready when the state announces their stewardship grants. Um, but in order to do that, we kind of need funding to be able to get the engineer's office to do the designs.
Okay, Jim, is that something you can touch base with Deb and try to figure out what you need from us? Maybe. Talk to us about scope in the near future, whatever that may be.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the work on Notre Dame right now is not to, to the park itself, but we're just looking at the road improvements because of all the utility work that was over there. But absolutely, that, that being said, you know, absolutely any park project that we ultimately do, um, you know, we, we should definitely coordinate. Uh, I was so interested to see what you put up there, uh, you know, even with the Notre Dame Drive Road Project, coordinating with you, the street trees that, you know, may have issues. Uh, as well as all our road projects. And, uh, I actually, uh, and I'll reach out to RTBW tomorrow about those trees we missed on, uh, the ash trees we missed on, uh, the grand to see if they can do it. Sometimes we have DBW do removals, so don't have to pay a contractor if it's small enough and, and their capabilities, but, uh. Thanks for pointing it out. I'm, I'm sorry we missed that.
You, you know, and, and it isn't like those trees are going to come down tomorrow.
Yeah.
That's part of why, I mean, if there was something that was really hazardous, we've gone to Public Works and they, they do address it. Um, and, and that's part of why we're out there, and, and we'll be out this spring again to re, resurvey, resurvey the trees and see if there's any changes. You know, winter's hard on trees.
Yeah, but, but Deb, there's, there's some, some report you need the engineer's office to repair to help you with some sort of certification, right? Is that what I'm understanding?
Uh, what I was asking for is, um. A design, a, a planting design. What trees would we really like to plant? And I, I'm going to say, I'm. I don't care where, which park we do or where we want to do, but, um, the state requires you to have a design to go in and, and to get the money to buy the trees. So for the grant.
Okay, gotcha. So you could just, Jim, could you, you know, I mean, I don't know the details, and we can, you know, you guys can figure that out, but Jim can definitely get back to us on scope or cost for his office to do that or what it needs to be. But I mean, generally, I think, you know. Overall, council's been very supportive of the green team, and I think we're going to continue to do what you guys need. You guys are on top of all the requirements and things, so you're not going to get much objection from us.
Okay, uh, Jim, I'll send you stuff. I'll send you information about it later this week.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, email me, and then we can talk and then report back exactly what is involved. And it's, but it doesn't, it doesn't sound like actually something too complicated, so probably, you know, work to get it done relatively easily, so.
Great. Awesome.
Counsel president, any other questions? Go ahead.
Wanted to add, I've had some extensive chats with, uh, our construction official about, uh, EV and EV charging stations in, uh, some of the new developments and what's happening with that. And, uh, we've had, we've had, uh, you know, there's some new legislation that's, that's, uh, uh, requiring that it be, not necessarily be there, but be wired to be there. When it was going to be there. So, uh, he's aware of that, and, uh, you know, we're, we're looking at some of the areas of potentially. You know, when, when, as new vehicles come up for capital to maybe make them electric and make it, have, make sure we have a charging station here. There's, but if you, uh, grants and programs. That could help us get more vehicles that, you know, that are electric vehicles, it would be good for us. It would be good for the price, and it would certainly be good for the environment. So. Just wanted to let the green team know that, and you all, that, uh, we've already started, uh, pushing that conversation down the line, so to speak. Um, and, uh, Bill, uh, Luneman from construction was, uh, uh, more than happy to oblige, and he's been talking with some of the developers about what they're doing to implement that.
Yeah, because the state law, I guess, kicked in in July of two thousand twenty-one, and, yeah, they don't have to install the charger, but they have to install the wiring, particularly in multifamily units.
Yep.
So, yeah, I kept wondering how they were going to do that in some of these places because you can't plug it into your garage.
Yeah, you cannot. So they're on, they're on that. He's already talking with them.
Okay, great.
Great. Any other questions from members, comments, questions from council? Okay, we're good. And is there anyone else from the green team who wants to speak? I'm pretty sure you guys did, did it, so we're good, right? Um, all right, great. So whatever you guys need from us, thank you again for all your hard work. I know there's a lot that goes behind the scenes, a lot of this, a lot of paperwork, uh, but we really, really do. Candy does candy, saw Candy's hand up. Candy, do you want to jump in real quick as a member of the green team? If you do, just raise your hand again. Give her a second, but, you know, thank you for all the hard work you guys, guys are doing. And I think, uh, Deb, you said you had one vacancy on the green team, right? Or is that old?
I think that's old. I think it's been filled.
Okay, good, great. Right, I think Candy's going to hold, you know, forever hold her peace with that, and, um. Don't see your hand up. Okay, great. So we're, we're good. Thanks, Deb, and, uh, Al for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. You're free to, um, you can just exit and join the public session if you want to hang around.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, or else you're going to be front and center for the rest. That's the only problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trying to stop my video. Okay.
Great. All right, all right, thank you. Uh, let's see, we have next. My page is mixed around. Uh, next up, we're going to have the floating holidays. Jamie, I'm going to defer to Jamie real quick. Jamie sent around. Uh, after the fact, there was. A memo, correct?
Uh, yes, I sent around the memo late this afternoon. I forgot to include the dates that they requested. Um, I believe it is July first and December twenty-third.
That's what I have on there, yeah.
And this is, uh, I recall from my previous, something we do every year, right? You know, they, um. Make this request, and we normally grant it, right? Unless there's some sort of administrative issue with those two dates. It ends up, for them, they get a longer weekend out of it, right? They time it so it falls, right? Smart, very smart. So, um, are we, we good, Jamie, from, you know, Al, but that's all you're asking for us, right? We just nod, or do we have to put it on the public meeting?
Um, no, I mean, I think we usually just do a motion, just approving the, the dates.
Okay. I mean, from the administrative side, is there any issues with these dates?
But if I could just comment, um, you know, so this was a situation where the, the union, uh, selected these dates, sent them over. Um, you know, there, there are some federal holidays that were, the buildings opened and some that were not, and that they selected these two dates to be alternates, obviously floating from the term. As opposed to some of the federal holidays, as we renegotiate the contract with the unions, we'll obviously want to make sure that they continue to. Uh, do that, or, you know, we talk about what the, uh, federal holidays are, just to make sure everybody's on track.
Gotcha. Okay, great. All right, any questions from members of council? Seeing none. All right, Jamie, motion now is okay?
Yeah, if you're okay with it.
Yep, all right, we'll make a motion. I'll entertain a motion, uh, to approve the, uh, CWA two floating holidays for July first and December twenty-third.
So move, Tom Lyon. Second, Lynn Jenny?
Jamie, would you mind calling the roll?
Mr. Smith?
I.
Mr. Jenny?
I.
Ms. Pareo?
I.
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Burrow?
I. The eyes have it. Motion carries. Great, thank you, Jamie. And, um, next up, there is no memo for this, right? But is there two thousand twenty meeting dates? Um, so I'll take lead with this. Jamie and I had a discussion about, um. You know, we normally have our first public meeting, right? The beginning of the month, followed by two work sessions, the second and, uh, fourth Tuesday. Of the month. The question for council is, we've been moving pretty diligently through these, and that it ends up being the fourth work session of the month. There's either one item on it, and we all have to come out. And, uh, Sal and Jim charge us, and, you know, we have to all drive out and things like that. So the question, you know, for us is, should council consider. Canceling one of those moving forward where we just have one work session every month? Um, and the question is, which one should we do? And or should we just move to the third Tuesday? I don't know everybody's schedules, but move to the third Tuesday, so then it's every other week there's a meeting. So I, I know we've been doing this for many years, but I think three meetings a month, we're exhausted. You know, we're just coming out and listening to each other talk about stuff that doesn't need to be discussed.
And can I, again, I just want to make sure that the third, uh, the third Tuesday, is that any kind of a conflict, Jamie, that you're aware of? Is anybody else on the third Tuesday?
I mean, personally, if there's conflicts among members of council or the mayor or something, then that's obviously take it off the table. I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to put anyone in a bind, but.
I'm good. I'm good either way. The, uh. Um, just making sure that there's not a conflict already on this, that someone else is scheduled in there.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, yeah, I don't, not on our meetings, right, Jamie? Yeah.
No.
Would, would it be of any value to, um. Continue with the, the third meeting date, but that as an option in case we need it?
The, yeah, the, the problem being that if we cancel the third work session, there's then two weeks where we don't have a meeting, two solid weeks. Um, I mean, we can definitely do that. I'm just, uh, that leaves us without a work session.
Now, what I'm saying is, uh, you have, uh, say, the first and third, maybe the fourth or the second could be an option. Not that we plan to have a meeting, but in the event we do need to have one, we could have one.
Yeah, 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 I see what you're saying. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It's, it's right, Jamie, from your perspective, it's more, it's better to be prophylactic and notice and then cancel, right? Then.
Yes, uh, yes, if that's how you want to handle it, yes, it's better to advertise. Um, if we did it, if we don't do that, then we would need to add a special meeting, which requires different notice.
Yeah, let's not do that. Um. So do we?
I mean, I don't know that we need to notice three work sessions in, in a row.
Yeah, that, I think that's, that's a problem. Yeah.
Tyler, do you, just as a, as another thought, um, as most of the folks, um. You know, uh, the attorney and the engineer and, uh, the other folks that come in for the public meeting, that, that won't change, but, you know, are there any conflicts from them that they have commitments made because of our. Schedule when they responded to the RFPs? Where they were.
Yeah, nobody said anything, so.
From the.
Conflict with the third Tuesdays?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll speak. I, I, I do have something on the third Tuesday, so.
Okay, that's fine, then, then we, that's, you know.
We, we know what I would suggest is, what would seem to make sense is, if you want to change, right now, the, the current meeting is first is the public meeting. Second, and then fourth are the work sessions, correct?
Yeah.
So I mean, a, a suggestion that I've seen in other municipalities i- is to avoid that three-week gap, perhaps modify. Uh, the first and second meeting, make that second meeting from a work session into your public meeting. your public meeting, and then second and fourth, and then the fourth meeting would be your work session. So it might, it might flow a little bit better. And then my experience has also been, in terms of monthly reports and things like that, that would allow department heads, municipal courts, tax receipt, tax collector to, to gather the prior month's reports as well, so that on the first meeting, you don't have that. That, that might, that might achieve your goals i- in terms of se- second and fourth. And then the one question I had for Jamie is, I believe, Jamie, for 2022, you've already advertised the, the entire, yeah, so.
Yeah, we would have to amend the, the annual meeting notice.
Yeah, either, either amend or to Lynn's point, sort of, sort of keep it on there and then just cancel as we get closer to each one, which could, could be more, more involved, but.
Yeah, my only concern is with the cancel approach is that people view the meetings on account, the public looks at the meetings and says, oh, they got a meeting next Tuesday. And then really, in our mind, we're going to cancel it. And they plan their life around that meeting and then it's gone.
And I, I think, I think as, as you had just mentioned, and Jamie mentioned, it's, it's smarter to do an amended meeting notice because i- if the, the thought is to change the first week from a public meeting, cancel that in its entirety and then make the second, the public meeting, where you, you want, I think you'd want to give notice of that as much as you can throughout the year.
Yeah. So I think Sal's option is we'd make the second Tuesday the public meeting and then the fourth Tuesday would be the work session. So that alleviates the, the third week conflict. The, the third week is still, Jamie, what are your thoughts on that? Is that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with that.
Just from your side administrative, getting the bills and all that like that, that helps.
Yeah.
I, I know one, one of the problems is that we're having, well, that's always a friction, is that, you know, there's a meeting right after our public meeting, right? So but, you know, Jamie's creating an agenda and by the time the meeting's over, she's then got to create another agenda, you know? And there's just a lot going on very rapidly. And it just sometimes makes it hard to do what we need to do. Now, this doesn't foreclose us from having a special notice. If something comes up, we have to meet, we can notice for it and meet, right? So is everyone okay with that? We, we do the second, second Tuesday will be the public meeting and the fourth will be a work session. So we're eliminating the first Tuesday of the month.
And, and would this be effective, I guess, starting with March?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I would suggest.
Let's give it a try. See how it works.
Yeah. Virginia and Tom, I didn't see you guys.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good. I was just checking real quick. It, it looks like it'll work.
Okay. I mean, listen, if, if there's anything and you got to move things around, we can stick to status quo. I'm not trying to mess up everyone's schedules, but Virginia, you all right with that?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Marlo, you're good?
Good.
Okay, great. Jamie, so we can do that?
Yeah, we'll put a resolution on for the next meeting, just to, you know, amend the previous resolution that we did for the annual meeting notice. And then we'll get all the new dates advertised and up on the website.
Okay, great. That sounds good. Any other thoughts, comments from council? Great. Okay, great. I think that's going to make us a little more efficient, alleviate some of the burden for administration and putting together agenda and allowing us to be more efficient with our time. So thank you, council for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good one for you, Joe. I got to tell you. All right. So next up is our discussion on the support for cannabis businesses. So I'm going to defer to somebody who has a little more knowledge of what's going on with this. So whether it be Sal or Gary's office, I, I know, or.
I mean, I, I, I can speak to it or the mayor, whichever.
So Sal, I'm going to ask you to fill in the details. The, the gist of this is that especially now, as we're getting closer to this, number of companies are coming to us and saying, hey, we need a letter of support that you, you know, will include us if we are lucky enough to get the license. And, you know, there's some, there's some hoops they have to go through in order to do that. That'll be what Sal tells you about. But they, they hit that quickly and it, I don't believe it, it even is something that, you know, that has to come to council. It's just kind of a, yeah, we do, we, you know, there's, there are a number of companies that have already approached us. So I'm going to have Sal talk about that in detail. And certainly whatever works out best, I'm in.
Yeah, yeah. Ready for me?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so, so what's been happening, I, by, by last count, I think we've had five separate companies make inquiries from someone in Boca Raton, Florida. We've had three or four different companies here, here in New Jersey. There, there have been meetings with two companies with the mayor and, and myself, and one, one of which came to nothing and one of which did seem to come to fruition. And what we've done so far is whenever a company contacts us, and we, we've had lawyers for different companies, we've had the owners themselves contact us, some have had a lobbying group contact. So we, we've let them know that, yeah, yes, Del Ran is, is open for business. We've approved this, you know, of the six different licensures, I've, the five have been approved, and we've identified for them where in the township they're approved. So we send them a copy of the ordinance and then send them as well a copy of the zoning map. So for example, in the one instance we've had so far, there has been one company which is going through the application process now and has identified a property on Route 130. And what, what was done was simply to say, the address of this particular property under the ordinance is in, this is in the C2 commercial zone. It's a conditional use with assuming that they meet these, these conditions, it, it's a, it's a permitted use. So it's really just a, a, a factual statement. There's, there's no action being done. You're not granting a license. It's not a mercantile license, because then that letter is taken or sent to the Cannabis Regulatory Commission, the CRC, which is the state regulatory body. And then they can look at it to say, for example, you know, this one particular vendor has an application pending for its state licensure. They've identified a property in Del Ran, whether they purchased it, whether they have a lease, whatever those means are. And now we have a statement from the township that this particular business is, is authorized. So there's been a number of conversations between myself, Joe, as he's been coming on board to say, well, who responds? How do we respond? Is there a package? Is it a phone call? And, and we, we thought that probably the, the best way for any inquiry would be to provide a copy of the ordinance, provide a copy of the zoning map. And then if there's additional interest, then at that point, they can request a, a, a meeting either with the business administrator, the mayor, whether or not you want me to be present i- is fine, to identify a certain parcel, because that way perhaps we can direct them to say, okay, while your application is pending at the CRC, then at that point, perhaps you may need to go to planning board. Maybe you need to go to zoning board. Maybe you don't need any municipal land use approvals at all. And once you get your license, you, you, you know, you, you can file your, your business plans and you're ready to go. So that seems to be the, the, the general consensus as to how, how to proceed.
Now, are we making it, who's making the determination? That it fits within the zone? Is that a zoning, the zoning attorney?
No, no. So, yeah, so no, it's, it's just, it's, it's simply by parcel. And that, and that's why it's just a threshold determination. It's, again, we've only, we've only had one letter requested. The C, the CRC is, is behind. They were supposed to issue regulations by sometime in February. They've already missed that deadline. But it's simply an address, which is an identification of a building that this particular address is in, again, the example, C2 zone of, of the township zoning map, according to the ordinance that we passed, this type of business is authorized. And so that's all, i- it's not that finite or specific. It's just an initial and then the meeting, I guess, with either Joe or the mayor to say exactly, what are you proposing? Then we would get into, do you need lighting? Do you need parking? Or are there all those sorts of questions? Then that would be directed to the appropriate board attorney and engineer planner, or, you know, whatever professional to say it's a zoning board or planning board issues. It's really just a threshold. Yes, we're, we're receptive to this type of business.
Okay. So I mean, but that's my question. Is this, is this a ministerial act in that it just happens? Or is this an act that has policy implications that council should be considered on? Like, that's what I'm struggling with.
Yeah, no, it's purely ministerial. All, all the policy implications were, were already done by council in the spring when the ordinance was adopted.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, pure, purely, purely ministerial.
Okay. And then they take this letter and send it up to the state for licensure?
Correct. Yeah. Which they are, they are ve- very much behind. They're very much behind in the regulations. I, I do know from my experience in other municipalities that the CRC has, has stopped issuing and is no longer going to issue any future medical marijuana licensure facilities. So whether or not all of those facilities automatically get converted to an adult use, we, we don't know what's going to happen with those. But a- again, it's, it's an evolving area of the law that, that, that literally day by day, week by week is, is, is being, i- is, is being sort of explored.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what's, what's the ask for council? We're just, just need to acknowledge that this is how this is going to work?
If that, if that's your preference, I mean, can, council may decide and say, no, we, we don't want to do that. And, you know, it's, it's up to the individual business owner to, to figure out. Let them look at our ordinance. It's available online. Let them look at our zoning map. It's available online. You know, whether, whether or not we want to be helpful in, in cultivating this type of business and pardon the pun. And I mean, to use cultivating there.
Yeah. I mean, do, do they need the letter? And that's sort of my struggle is, you know, any other application, they hire an attorney and the attorney looks at the zoning maps and the zoning regulations, determines what they can do and what they can't do and advises on what variances. Why in this situation is it different?
Because the CRC, the statute requires a letter from municipality. You're, you're exa- you're exactly right. I mean, any, any other situation, if this were a restaurants, yeah, you, you don't need to do that letter. If this were a gas station or something like that. But in this instance, a letter is, is required from municipality. Yeah.
So then it's required that we provide the letter, right? So there's really no decision for us to make in terms of.
Again, it's just very ministerial. The, 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 the other question is how many letters? I mean, to, to date, we've only issued one. We've, we've had a few other suitors, but one is only asked with, with specificity and we've issued that. But then the question arises again, do we issue 50 letters? I mean, will all 50 applicants ultimately be gi- be given licenses from the state? I mean, the one that we've issued so far, what, what if they don't get a license from the state? And then we're going to get subsequent applicants. And, and candidly, the CRC has, has no answers or direction with regard to the municipality on how to answer that. I mean, you're not endorsing the business. You're not signing off to their business plan. You're simply identifying the mi- the ministerial act as to by property location, if that's permitted in the particular zone. For, for example, we've approved in our industrial zone that that would be an ideal place for cultivation. So what if someone comes up with an address and that's what they want to do in the industrial park? We would simply identify that.
Okay.
Yeah. But we don't, we don't have to do anything. I mean, you don't have to take any action. Just sort of up, up for discussion. Yeah, I, I think, I think it would give Joe some guidance moving forward and how to, how to address these inquiries.
I want, so would it also help us to maybe forewarn us if, if a certain type of business is trying to, to make their way here by just going through some general questions and answers with them? Trying to listen from them some, you know, what their business plan is going to be?
Yes, that, that's what, that's why I've tried to encourage in the, in the conversations that I've had with folks, the, the two in person and, and the three on the telephone, is once they see the zoning map a- and what's permitted, then if they have any further interest to contact and, and sit down, so this way we can get a, an informal sense as to what sort of business will be. So there's a benefit, benefit certainly to the township as well.
Thank you. Well, I mean, I, I'm confused in that you said that it's not that it's a ministerial act and that we just do it. And then you said, or we don't have to require it. So, you know, maybe I'm getting myself confused, but.
You, you know, I mean, in terms of requires, a fortress of words on my part. I mean, it's, yeah, it's a purely ministerial act to say, this address is in this zone. This is what the ordinance allows in this zone. That's it.
Okay.
You can actually do a boilerplate letter, fill in the blanks with the zone and everything and, and just user everybody.
The, the one, the one, the one letter that was done so far could be very easily modified and made into a template or boilerplate and it can be filled out. Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Way to be consistent anyway.
Yes. Yeah. And, and, and that was, I'm sorry, but that was done, I mean, Jamie should have a copy of the letter. I know Wendy worked on a copy of the letter. So it's floating around somewhere in a word format if I don't have it here myself. So it's, it's easy enough to, to make a template.
So if I could, if I could just add, just to be clear, you know, even if, even if we sent 50 letters, well, I think, you know, we're going to be limited to the licenses that they issue. And we've limited the number of licenses in town, or you did by ordinance, based on the recommendation. So it's not, you know, this is, this, as, as I see it in, in the simplest terms, this is a case where, you know, if, if 50 people are trying to bring a store here or, or cultivation here, then maybe one of those is chosen. If only one submits, submits, then, and it's not that one, it's kind of like a college application. If you only submit to one and you don't get it, then, then you have no backup. So if, if three or four or whatever, you know, say, yeah, I have, I have a spot if we can get the license. This is just for them to get to the point where they can hopefully win a license. If they, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if, and then if they win the license, then they'd have to come back. And if any changes were made, they'd have to come to planning, the planning board and the like. So this is not, this is not, here you go, you're, you're clear to, to do this. This is one step they have to go through before they can even hope to get a license from the state. Did that help or hurt?
Okay. No, that's good. I, I mean, I think the letter, my only recommendation is the letter should say, you know, I'm sure it does, but this doesn't guarantee, you know, that you're going to get the license and that it doesn't guarantee that another applicant doesn't chew up the other eight that are required in the town. And then you're left without a license because we don't have any left, right? I mean, but, I mean, is there any thoughts from, from members of council? I'm not really sure.
Sal, is, is the licensure contingent upon them having a space?
From the state level, I, I, I don't know exactly, because I don't know exactly the regulations from the CRC. All, all, all we do know, Lynn, is that the CRC requires an applicant to have the letter from the municipality.
All right. So the letter's not a guarantee. It's very simply saying, hey, if they qualify in our community, we have regulations and ordinances, let them at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean. I, because we went through something, some people wanted to buy our building. And what they explained to us, when you're going for the application, there's checkboxes. And the more boxes you check, the better your, to get the license, like you move up on who's going to get the licenses. So having a building or whatnot is one of the boxes. So if you have a building that you can go into that you're either under contract for own already, it strengthens your application, because there's only going to be so many awarded the first go around and whatnot. So it, it's a little bit of a process and, and it's, it's a, it's kind of a work in process. And like you say, it's, it's not moving as fast as some people would have hoped.
Yeah, that's for sure. Naturally, the state is behind the ball on that and left people picking it up. But we're prepared here to do what we have to do. So I, hopefully that gives you guys enough direction. I mean, you got the ask that we need, Joe? Is that, you know?
We're good.
Okay. Okay. Jamie, are you good on your side with that?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay, great. Awesome. So with that, we'll go to our welcome committee. I know there was an email sent today regarding it too. So Mayor, you know, we're more than willing to point the committee. Do you have the names and all? Do you want to get us up to speed on that?
Yeah. Do we, do we have? Do you, do you want to do that on here? I think we, I think it was sent around today. Let me just pull it up for you.
Yeah, I mean, there was, I saw an email you wanted to amend some of these names.
Well, we're in the process of trying to, let me pull up, get all confirmation. And this is, every time there's a new committee, you want to try to do this. There would be a number of people. I don't know that it, it would be limited. And I, and I'm trying to, Jamie, do you by any chance know where the, that list is? You know, I, I know.
I have the list that we sent on the agenda. I don't know what list. I didn't see anything today that was sent around.
I think what we we we're hoping to add. Where someone from the DBA, someone from potentially the Chester Woods department. Some because that it certainly is some of the thing, this is kind of a big all over the town kind of project. Someone representing the RAC and. You know, a number of other people that are residents, maybe not tied to that. And and I don't know that we have. That anybody buying in from council, but we certainly like those folks that might have the opportunity that are in town all all the time. If there's a visit, I think maybe Kim from from the administrative office would be good. She's in town and knows where, you know, could be helpful that way, maybe, you know, I don't know if if we we seem to be volunteering Lynn a lot or Marlo. You know, there's a, there's a number of people, I don't know that I have the the full list in front of you, do we need to do that to appoint them?
Well, I mean, no, I mean, we can appoint as many people as we want and amend, you know, add people later on. The question is, do these people, Lynn, Marlo, Kim, Brian, Peggy and Wendy, they all consent to the appointments?
I believe they did, we're still trying to reach, certainly Peggy and Brian are in. Chester Woods is in, okay, we got confirmation, I'm just going through my emails now, so. You know, I'm sure that Kim Bogie from from the administrative office is is has agreed to do so too. So do you want us to, do you want us to just read through the list? Or do you?
Yeah, we just make a motion to appoint the committee. Yeah, point those names, so if you have, that was my question, if these people have the consented to do it, we can do that and get it started for you guys, so.
So yeah, that was the list and if. If Lynn and Marlo want to join or if they don't want to and someone else, you know, Wendy is on there and and. Has been kind of spearheading this, we've been talking, Tyler and I have been talking about this for a long time. And certainly I would be, you know, member of the committee as well. So whatever from council wants to join in, that's fine, as long as it's limited to two and we don't have any. Open issues.
Okay, so Lynn and and Marlo, thoughts on that? If you guys.
Unless someone else wants to, you know, take the spot, I'd be happy to serve on that.
Great.
My thoughts as well, you know, someone else wants to. But I'll, but I'll do it.
Good, I'm pretty tapped on time, so I will not be, I'd appreciate if someone else could step up. So Virginia and Tom, you guys. You're good? Okay.
Yeah, my my, I think my wife just threw something at me from the background, said, don't join another committee.
Good, all right, then that's good, so I can, we can do the motion now to appoint Lynn, Marlo, Kim, Brian. Peggy, Wendy and Gary and the other folks we can do later on.
That's it, and the person from Chester Woods, who's who will be named, I don't know if that's Dana from Chester Woods or not, but.
Yeah, I need the name to do that.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we can get back to you, you can add it at any meeting, I'm sure, it'll be growing, I'm sure too, because this needs, there's a lot of reach that we need to have with this.
That's fine, and do you know how to pronounce Peggy's, I'm not going to try to butcher her last name, do you know how to pronounce that?
Schweickert, I think.
Schweickert and then that's the first part.
Ryan Beata. Kim Bogie.
We'll go with that, that's fine. I don't know.
Wendy Mitchell, Gary.
Okay. All right, so if all council's good, we'll make a motion to appoint the welcome committee through our legislative power.
Sorry, the name is Kovalkovich.
Okay, why don't you read the list off mayor, if you could? Do you want to read the names, do you have it or no? I can do.
I I don't have it in front of me, but let let me just real quick, so it'd be Lynn Jenny, Marlo Smith. Peggy Kovalkovich. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that Peggy. And Wendy Mitchell, Gary Katrambone, Ryan Biata.
Kim Bogie.
Kim Bogie.
Great, so just one, two, three, four, five, six, seven folks. We can add, so with that, I'll ask for a motion in a second, please.
We need to abstain, excuse me, Marlo, I need to abstain.
It's a question for Sal.
Sorry, I don't, I unmute myself, you don't have to abstain, but if you choose to do so, you can.
So there was a motion from Tom, correct? And a second would be great. Virginia, gotcha. Jamie, do you mind just calling the role for this?
Sure, Mr. Smith.
Abstain.
Mr. Jenny.
Abstain.
Ms. Pareo.
Hi.
Mr. Lyon.
Hi.
Mr. Burrow.
Hi, the eyes have it, motion carries, congratulations to the members of the welcome committee, we look forward to the work they accomplish. Right? Next up, we have our, that's it for the work session portion, right? Jamie, there's nothing to walk on, right?
Nope, nothing to walk on.
Okay, great. First up, we have our reports now, first up, our interim township administrator, Joe Bellina, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. President, we received a letter yesterday from GDM Winter Enterprises. Discussing redevelopment to one of the redevelopment possibility to one of the marinas in town. So along with the professionals, I'll probably be arranging a meeting the next week or two, just to hear what they have to say. And we'll keep you, the council fully apprised of what's going on. Okay. The only other thing I have is, I've started a review of the budgets, as you, as you know, as you heard me say before, yesterday was public works, I concentrated solely on that. Brian and I, we we really took a tour of the entire town, looking at at certain projects that we'd like to undergo for this year. There's one, there's one that's really of immediate concern, and that is the. Delray Community Park. The T-ball field or the artificial circus field, there seems to be some undermining around home plate significantly there and along to three other bases too. So there was an improvement project last year for the for the park. And some funds remain a sufficient enough, sufficient amount to cover these capital repairs. So I I want to check with bond council, I believe we could go forge ahead without having to do an amendment to the bond ordinance, but let me do that first. And if they give us the go ahead, we could probably effectuate these repairs. In enough time before opening day down or before the end of March is what they would like to, you know, gain access to the field. But if you get a chance, you you know, you're in the area, it is significantly damaged. The insurance company probably. Would not even allow its use, the the home plate area is so bad. So I just wanted to call your attention to that and I'll keep you posted at the next meeting. You know, if it's on schedule to do right away or we have to amend the bond ordinance. Any questions?
No, Joe, that's that's great, and I know we have a team, Fields Committee folks who are working diligently, you know, to kind of get a grips of all of this, you know, we have. It's no secret, we have a lot of open space here in town, specifically parks, and I think over the past couple administrations, we've lost kind of sense of the management of that, right? And I think, you know, this fields committee is really getting on top of that, helping us plan strategically, looking at all these improvements. I know the Fields Committee talked to Jim a couple of days ago, I believe, it's good you're going out there, so we appreciate that, you know, we got to have these fields. It's it's a part of doing business here in town and we can't just keep ignoring it, right? So.
I'll tell you what, you should really, you know, you should take a vow because the the conditions that the fields are in. I mean, so many of these fields are, you have irrigation systems, I've never seen that before, that's tremendous. And I think. I had a good chat with Brian about, you have all these fields, as you said, Mr. President, got to make sure you maintain and have sufficient resources to do so.
Yeah.
In a way of manpower, equipment and what have you, so that'd be more about that when we under, when we review their budget, okay?
Yeah, absolutely, you know, my comment's not a reflection on public works doing a bad job, they do. Well, that's me correcting myself, but you know, they do a fantastic job and we need to support that, absolutely. I mean, I think we've talked about before for the public who are on, we've expanded the amount of fields and we've decreased the amount of public work, folks. So normally it doesn't work like that, it's the inverse, so I'm glad you're taking a look at it, Joe, and getting that straightened out. Is there any questions, Joe, where we have any comments on that? Great, okay, thanks, Joe. Next up, we have reports from our clerk, Jamie Eggers, Jamie.
Just one quick item, we have held the blood drive again today, thankfully, after they had to cancel the November blood drive due to staff shortages. We were, we had every appointment filled, hopefully, everybody showed up and it was a successful drive. And just thank you for allowing it to to continue to be run here in the. Community rooms, that's it.
Great, thank you, Jamie. Next up, we have report from our mayor, Mayor Katramo.
Yes, thank you very much, just a couple of quick items to report. One is that we were approached by Millbridge Elementary to do a story walk, which is an interesting and exciting new concept, which combines. Walking and reading, we're really excited to be working with the Millbridge Elementary to help them build this, they want to build a story walk at Delray Community Park. You know, we've just had the initial conversation with that and we're trying to get some details and and working out some of the funding. Once all that happens, I'll certainly come back and let everyone in on on exactly what the plan would be. And how we could implement that and and get you all in the loop. They're, they are really excited about it, it's a concept that's apparently coming up all over, where you read a book, the book, the the pages of the book are special pages, they're treated, they're outside. And you walk, you know, either as a family or or whatever, and you read the the page and then you walk to the next page. And it seems to be something that's really becoming very popular, that allows children to combine reading and exercise, get fresh air at the same time. We had just a first meeting to talk about the project last last week and we're kind of just in the planning stage there. I'll I'll be sharing an update about this really special collaboration, probably in a couple of weeks. You know, I'm I'm going to defer to Jim, but there was a meeting with the Army Corps Wednesday. And I can't wait to talk about that further, but I I think we're, Jim will fill us in when he does his report about where that is right now. And finally, you know, with the governor's decision this week regarding the school masking policy, I just wanted to let the residents know. That we're looking closely at reopening the building for meetings and events. That would be, you know, all the various sports items and certainly our meetings, planning and zoning boards. But remember, right now, the building is open, we have protective glass for the clerk's office, the tax office, court. You know, you can get animal license, you can get to planning and zoning, you can get to the sewer department if you want to pay a bill inside. And and certainly construction, which are very important, the council provided the funds recently. We have a glass that's put in, it was built to be more of a security thing, but it's perfect now that we're experiencing the pandemic. So they're still able to do that, we're still right now have a mask mandate in the building. But we're looking at the numbers, trying to figure this out, so please look for an update, both on the township website and Facebook page. And we look to hopefully see everybody at these meetings in person again very soon. And that's going to be my report for tonight, thank you.
Thanks, mayor, and I want to, on behalf of council, can strongly urge you to open up the building so we can get back into person because Zoom is exhausting as it is.
I understand, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Next up, we have our reports from our solicitor, Sal Sisliano, Sal.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Sal. Next up is our report from Jim, our engineer from CME Associates, Jim Winkowski, thanks for joining us, Jim.
First, thank you for having me. So over the last few weeks, I just, not much has gone on with the weather from a from a capital improvement standpoint. We have been working with various contractors, did a lot of work towards the end of last year on administrative issues. Most of the projects have some punchless work that is left to get done, which are weather dependent. So as soon as the weather breaks, they're geared to go out there and in the meantime, we've been just dealing with them administratively on their paperwork. Payrolls, workforce reports, pay estimates and maintenance bonds, so once the weather clears and they get the punchless done, then we can close them out. I know I've also been talking to various, you know, public works and about the our capital recommendations for next year, mainly the roads. I also met with the the RAC about, you know, the parks and, you know, potentially, you know, potential projects there to improve, you know, the parks and the fields. So we have a report, you know, the council is going to be getting shortly, I'm hoping to begin to discuss it at the next workshop. And but also break me up to the the Army Corps, we did meet with the Army Corps last Wednesday. To go over a plan that they gave us, it's called a project management plan, it's a draft plan. That outlines the scope of work that's going to occur over the next phase of the project, which is what we call concept development. Because we just had that meeting last week and Mr. Blina is relatively new to town, we thought it'd be best to put put that off until the twenty seconds. So we can, you know, formalize a report for you and and give everybody time to look at something we we're going to send you and give Mr. Blina a chance to, you know, stick his teeth into it. The project has a long history, so we want to, we don't want to rush it and we do have some time to to discuss that. So at the next workshop, we'll hopefully have that on the agenda for what the next step, so that that project with the Army Corps down at River Drive.
Great, thanks, Jim.
Thanks.
Any questions from council? Great, thanks, Jim, and Jim, you're working on the road list?
Yes, that's part of the capital improvement project, we have all finalized, I just got to get one last look over and I can send it to the the projects and the cross systems.
Alright, because we normally approve those roads, if I'm not mistaken, before the budget, right? I mean, don't we kind of, we kind of, we move very quickly and or else if we wait till the budget, they don't get done till the next year, so we're still on schedule with that?
Yes, we are, I mean, these roads that we that are part of this have been part of that free, the four year plan that we we've crossed off many of the roads above it. So it should be new, but I'm thinking that it it should be good and. It should be good, yeah.
Cool, thanks, we're looking forward to that, thanks, Jim. Next up, we have reports from members of council, first up, we have Councilman Virginia Pareo, who's joining us from Swedes Lake, somewhere out there, Virginia.
Yes, just really, I'm glad to hear we'll be discussing the report from the Army Corps of Engineers next work session. Because I think it's really important that we get that going, that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thanks, Virginia. Next up, we have a report from Councilman Marlo Smith, Councilman.
Thank you very much, a couple of quick things, would like to thank the green team once again for their fantastic work. Also want to thank everyone that came out for the blood drive today. Know that there's an urgency for additional blood, so folks are donors or wannabe, please sign up. One other thing I'd like to address is just a, you know, a couple of the public comments from last week about the lawsuit that was filed against the Delray zoning board. I was on that zoning board and then I resigned that seat and became a member of council. When a vacancy opened up. Once I started on the council, you know, I asked the question if I was able to participate in the case, you know, since I'd previously seen it when I was on the zoning board. So long story short, got the advice that, you know, I would be able to. Actually go and, you know, work on the application because, you know, these were two separate governing bodies within the township. And so was was able to do that, so as a new member of council, now trusted the advice that was provided. And that was the reason I was able to vote on the issue. I'd like to also clear up one other item, there was a couple of misstatements in some of the comments. I personally was not named in the lawsuit, the Delray zoning board was named as an entity and not me personally. Thank you very much, end of report.
Thanks, Councilman, next up is Councilman Lynn Jenny, Councilman.
Thank you, Marlo, I'm not going to repeat Marlo's comments, but I would echo the same comments, obviously. Just a point of interest that we're talking about the parks, I don't know if people really realize, but we have a hundred and eighty one thousand, hundred eighty one acres. Of parks and recreation areas in Delray and overall open space and undeveloped space, we have two hundred and forty two acres. Of open space that we have not yet developed, so I think that's pretty impressive for a town our size. And it's 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 good to know that we have some open airspace for people to enjoy. Other than that, I've been working on that we value our veterans. Other than that, I've been working on that we value our veterans. It's a, an award that we can earn. And so far, I've talked to two gentlemen who are very active with veterans, and they're gonna be looking to provide me some names of veterans. We can do several things to earn points. You have to earn 140, 145 points in order to be awarded this award for veterans, valuing veterans. And there are a couple that I already looked at that we can nail real quick for 50 points. We need to honor quarterly, but I recommend monthly, a veteran at our meetings. Memorial Day, Veterans Day ceremonies, we get points for those, and we've already accomplished that. We can honor a member of POW or on POW MIA Day or on the Gold Star Day, we can honor some veterans that are involved in that way. And also provide veteran resources on our website, which I think would probably be a pretty easy thing to do, or a link at least to where veterans can go for support. So I'm really excited about, we're getting moving on this. I, I would think in March, we will have the ability to honor a veteran at our, our meeting and move forward. There are some other things that Jeff had shared with me that he had done some research on, or not research, but when they sent out information to the commercial for mercantile licenses, they also sent a letter asking if they'd be willing to give discounts if there's any other listed veteran-owned businesses out there. So we asked them to respond, and Mr. Blina, I'm not sure if you, we've gotten any responses back, or maybe Jamie on that, but we could also get points for providing discounts, parking spaces. There are a lot of items on here, but I think we can nail these pretty quick. And then we can start moving towards earning the award. And that's my report.
Thanks. Thanks, Lynn. I'm sure, you know, Joe can get back to you on some of that, and thank you for taking the lead. You know, in doing that, it's, there's a lot to that, you know. It's, nothing is incredible lift, but right, someone needs to be driving that ship. So I appreciate you doing that, Lynn, in any way. We can support you here, you know, continue as you do to report back to us, and we'll make that happen. I'm sure Jamie and Joe can help as well. All right, great. Thanks. And I know Mr. Gilbert would be very proud. He doesn't use Zoom, I'm told, so, or he tells us, but when in person, I'm sure he'll, we'll keep him updated with that. All right. Great. Thanks, Lynn. And next up, we have our Vice President of Council, Mr. Tom Lyons, Vice President.
Thank you, Council President. Like to thank the Green Team for all they do, and I'm looking forward to the, buy some trees through the Tree Bank and whatnot, dedicate them to loved ones and stuff like that. I think that's a really great thing. Also, hats off to our employees. As you can see, they're stepping up and taking roles within the administration that need to be filled. So we'll really appreciate that. I'd also like to address some of the things that have been going on in the public comment and some of the questions. I've stayed mostly quiet during this whole situation. I do believe this council is not corrupt. I have done nothing wrong. Nor to my knowledge has Virginia, Marlo, Lynn, or Tyler. I also believe the mayor has done nothing illegal, and trust he has done nothing wrong. Make no mistake, we have one individual who I believe is a carpet-bagging, self-serving, disingenuous person that does not care about Delran or the taxpayers. He only cares about promoting himself and looking to make money any way he can through potential lawsuits. I find it appalling. He's using our residents to advance his own agenda. But this person has asked some pertinent questions that over the course of many months have either been ignored, partially answered, or answered through statements. I believe our solicitor hasn't done us any great favors with some of his non-answers and his attitudes from the, when this first all came down. I think it would have went a long way with the residents if they had been given some more answers than other than we did nothing wrong. But let's face it, Monday morning quarterbacks, they're geniuses. It's easy to lead from the back. It's fun to throw stones from the back. It's harder to lead from out front. To the mayor, if you had just explained from the very beginning how some of the events had unfolded and the sequences, folks would have respected that. The absolute truth is indeed, if it is indeed the truth, is always an appropriate response. To Sal, if your legal opinion is there were no missteps, or nothing was done illegal, state why and support that with the facts. And those of you who were at the meetings when we were in person or maybe watching online, you really didn't get to witness some of the things that our resident antagonist and his lackey behind their cell phone cameras making faces at us, trying to intimidate us, or trying to goad us into confrontations. As Councilman Jenny and I were leaving a meeting one evening, they decided it'd be fun to mock Councilman Jenny's sweater and my sports coat and call us buffoons. And I'm not bringing this up because my feelings are hurt. It's just that these are the type of individuals some of you find so brilliant and clever. They're embarrassing and pathetic. So I've tried to remain calm and professional up to this point. I'm frustrated by the lack of answers from certain individuals on the township side and baffled that some individuals hide behind being a good government advocate for their own personal gain. So that's my report, and I do truly believe this is not a corrupt council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. For my report, I, I've had some remarks, remarks prepared, but, you know, I figured I'd just speak from, from the heart with this. Sort of echoing in what, what Tom's referencing is, you know, I've remained silent myself for, I don't know how long it's been. I think it's been almost five, six months. And I waited for people twice my age to do the right decision, to make things right. People twice my age, and they have it. But now the time to say enough is enough is now. It's, it's, it's been going on for way too long. And respectfully, the mayor can and must answer the questions for his own conduct. This council is not going to be held to the fire for somebody else's conduct. That's just not how this works. I understand people's frustrations that the mayor has not answered any questions. It's disheartening, and that's not the purpose of local government, right? Local government is where the closest we possibly can be to our elected officials, and he needs to answer the questions that've been asked. Some of these are rightfully important questions with important implications that need to be answered. And if, if he can't answer those, that's, that's, that's frankly an embarrassment. The township is being hamstrung by this. This one individual, we repeatedly litigating over and over again, the conduct of one person. It has consumed this council and this township, the employees in this township, crippling the structure of this township to get anything productive done, and it's beyond frustrating for all of us. It's frustrating and embarrassing. And for those folks who've been frustrated for the last five months, I've kind of put a face on to kind of control my frustration, but I'm more frustrated than anybody else on any of these calls or any, you know, including the public. We're trying each and every day to pick up the cards, play the cards that were dealt, and pick up the pieces that were given here at council. Trying to keep this train on the tracks, do the job that we need to do, but it's very frustrating because certain individuals are making this very, very hard. And many of you know, I'm, listen, I'm 25 years old. I work my tail off for this township every day because this is the township that I love. I grew up here. I was born here. I want to stay here and make this a better place, right? I don't do this for my health. I can assure you that, and I don't do it for the money because I spent all day today on the phone in the last couple of weeks, in the last five months on the phone, trying to get things accomplished and get us through this and get some questions answered, still to no avail. I do this for the community I love. I really do. And it's been harder and harder and harder to get that done. I didn't get into this government. I didn't get elected to beholden to somebody else, especially someone who doesn't care about members of this council and has repeatedly thrown us under the bus for something we didn't do. And I'm not gonna, sure as hell, I'm not gonna answer for anyone else's conduct moving forward. You know, people are their own people, and they can answer for their own actions. And as I mentioned before, it's completely frustrating that certain individuals have crippled the productivity of this township. There are hard-working men and women of this township, the police, Jamie, our, our construction office, you name it. All these people are trying to get their jobs done to provide the services our residents need, and they can't get it done because we can't move forward. And that, that's, that's beyond frustrating. You know, so, you know, let me address that. There's been repeated calls. I've seen them on Facebook for council or the mayor or Lynn or one of us to call for the mayor's resignation. And I understand where that frustration is coming from. We all have the same frustration, but me calling for his resignation has little consequences because he controls his own actions and his own destiny. Frankly, he hasn't listened to me yet in the last six months, or we wouldn't be in this position. So for me calling for his resignation is equivalent of me asking for him to do jumping jacks. It's not gonna happen. It's, it's, it's of no merit. Gary's his own man, and he knows what is right for the township, and he needs to start doing what is right for the township that he was elected to do. But there's one thing council can control, and that's what Tom mentioned earlier, was our role and invite in appointing a solicitor. You know, Sal, this is nothing personal against you, but I feel like our advice and quality has, in the past couple of months, I'm deeply concerned about the quality of our representation. Losing faith and trust and confidence in our legal representation, which undermines the ability for council to trust the advice we get and to make decisions and move the township forward. It's a fundamental principle that we trust the advice we get, and I frankly don't think that trust is there anymore. Repeatedly has been asked to articulate his reasoning to the public and to council, and yet that has not happened at all. If you believe something, you need to articulate it to members of council and to the public and hold true to your advice that you're given. If you can't stand up for the advice you're given, then that's, that's a bigger problem. So with that, I'm going to kindly ask for the resignation of our Solicitor's Office, please, sir, you know, it's nothing personal. Do it for the greater good of this township so we can do the right thing and we can move forward. If not, council will be left with no other options but to use our legislative authority to check the power of the administration under the Township Code and Title 40. I, I really do not say this with any political bone in my body, just pure frustration that we really need to move forward. We need to do the right things to the people of Delran. It's a very simple process. It's a very simple principle that we need to hold true to. It's, it's so fundamental. The bar is so low. We just need to provide and do the right thing. So I'm going to ask council to walk on a closed session item in addition to the closed session for the union, potential litigation to discuss certain matters. And with that, in closing, you know, enough is enough. We need to get back to doing the work at the township, and it's time people, twice my age, pick up the mantle and get the job done. Thank you. Next up, we have public comment. I'll ask for motion to go in the public comment.
Motion, Lynn.
Lynn, in a second. It'd be greatly appreciated.
I'll second.
Was that Lynn?
Lynn and Marlo.
Lynn and Marlo. Jamie, you got that all in favor? Aye, aye. Great. Those opposed, the motion carries. Our floor is now open to public comment. Members of the public who are joining us tonight, welcome. Just a few rules to go over. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand on Zoom, and you will be recognized. At that time, you, you normally would approach the podium, but there's no such thing. So we'll recognize you by name, and Jamie will allow you into the meeting where you can speak. Please state your name and address for the record. Remarks should be addressed to the body as a whole. Individual speakers are allotted five minutes of time, and, you know, there's been some questions about why we allot five minutes of time. Actually, almost every governing body in the state of New Jersey does that, as is recommended by any good council. And it's merely, not to limit somebody's speech, but it's merely to protect the speech of other folks, so somebody can't grandstand and consume 30 minutes of somebody else's time. And all statements are part of the record, which is both written and video recorded and audio recorded. So we, we cannot be retracted or taken down after the fact. So with that, I'll offer the floor to the public. If you could, please raise your hand. We're more than happy to recognize you. First up is Joseph T. Ryan. Jamie, could you?
I'm sorry. It's actually Pat Pomerantz.
Pat, you did a bait and switch on us there.
No, I didn't. It's just that I have a couple of accounts, and that is our corporate.
I know. I'm just busting your chops.
I didn't realize that it was coming up that way. Normally, I change it to my name, but I don't see me on here to be able to do that. I apologize.
No, and just busting your chops, Pat. If you, so you could just state your name and address for the record, and go ahead.
Sure. Patricia Pomerantz, 21 Alden Avenue. I have a couple of things. First of all, could we possibly get Public Works to go out and take down all the Delran tree lighting signs that are still around the township?
Yeah, that would be great. If we could, please make that happen.
Yeah, I think they're a little overdue. And then I'd like to know, and I believe that Chester Avenue is a county road. Am I correct with that, Tyler?
Not anymore.
Chester is no longer a county road. There was an agreement, the road swapped, so it's the Delran Township Road.
Okay, then any ideas on when that's going to be repaved? I have stopped coming home down Chester Avenue because that is just ridiculous.
Rightfully so. And I, on the way here, I was frustrated with it. So Jim, Jim would have that answer. Jim, do you happen to know when we're gonna get that repaved by the PCNG?
Yeah, PCNG has about two more weeks left of finishing the services, which happens after the main was replaced. Then they're gonna go in and reconnect everybody's service to the new main. And then after that, the project, it's going to, there's not gonna be any work activity. Usually, we use that time to let things stabilize out there, let the trench settle. The, the plan was for them to come back and repave this spring slash summer. I do have a meeting with the PSCG Project Manager next week to go over the repairs that were done, all the patches. Some of them are less than ideal. Some of them stick up a little out of the road, creating like bumps in the road. And also talking about moving up the schedule repaving, considering the, the, the extent of trench repairs that were done out there, and it might be wiser to get it repaved sooner rather than later without sacrificing, you know, the, the trenches themselves, making sure that they do get all the settlement. So there'll be about two more weeks, and there'll be a break in anything out there, and no work activity for a while. And then paving, milling and paving will happen most likely this spring. It will take about a week.
Yeah, that, that would be great, because as I said, I either come home to Teller's Lane, sometimes I go down Fairview, but I live off Chester, so it's kind of out of my way to do that, but that bumping all the way home is just like, yeah, enough already.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna work to get them to, to fix those temporary patches in the near future, not wait for the milling and paving.
Yeah, if they could at least kind of flatten them out, that would be great.
Yeah, yes, recognize that.
And this is, and, you know, my apologies, I haven't really attended many meetings. It's, I've got a conflict with a, a church thing. It's the first and third Tuesday of every month. How do you become part of the welcoming committee?
The welcoming committee is recommended by the administration and then appointed by council. So if you're interested, you can email the mayor's office.
Okay, great. I'll, I'll do that.
Thanks, Pat.
And then, you know, I want to say that Tyler, I, I commend you for what you just had to say. I truly do. And I have, yes, been following this and listening to a lot of people and having been somewhat directly involved in the past. I know where a lot of people are coming from, and I, hopefully, I don't use up my five minutes in saying this, and I'm able to get it all out, but I don't believe that the town has anything against anyone on council. I truly don't. I commend what you had to say, and Tom Lyon as well, but I don't believe that anyone in town feels that anyone else did anything that was inappropriate. But I have to say, and I want to kind of make this as a matter of record, having run against Mr. Catribone and this woman who personally attacked me and allowed people to attack me on the Delran Township's Facebook sites, whether it was 2.0 residential official, call it whatever, what is out there, to the point that I finally said, that's it, you won't hear anything from me on Facebook. I tried to play it nice and put out what I would hope to do. Someone asked me, you know, what was your plan? And I explained my plan, and he got back to me and said, you know what? I am so sorry that I've already voted, and I voted for the mayor. I didn't know what your plan was. And I took so much abuse and criticism, and I was called despicable and deplorable. And I was called despicable and deplorable. And I may be a lot of things, but I certainly don't think I'm despicable or deplorable. And that woman is now uh uh hired with our township. She is a member of this welcoming committee and doesn't even live in our town. How can someone who doesn't live in our town be on our welcoming committee? Can somebody answer me that question? And I just heard this tonight. Welcome to Delran, but I don't live here. Well, why don't you live here? How can you welcome somebody to Delran if you don't live here? Someone please answer that question.
Can I answer that question?
Sure, you go right ahead.
Sure. Well, she lived here most of her life growing up, and as an adult temporarily moved out of town. And is in the process of finding a location to move back. Um, she is here as our Communications Director, and as, in my opinion, has done a great job. Um, and it was, uh, you know, Tyler and I have talked a long time about doing a welcome committee, and she has actually pushed it. Um, the uh, a little further to to actually make it come to fruition. So uh, she has run with the ball uh to get us across to this point where we're forming the committee. And um, uh, she will be back in town, I believe, within the next several months, and she'll be, you know, she'll be here. She grew up here, she went to school here, spent most of her adult life here, and now she's coming back.
Great, thanks. Uh, Pat, can you just, we're we're getting way past time, so can you just kind of wrap it up?
Um, I have nothing really more to say, other than that, you know, I think the personal connection to the mayor um speaks for itself. And I have nothing more to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, uh, Jamie, if we could, Gabber, is that how you pronounce? I think it's Matt, right, but. Did you add him in there, Jamie? You're muted.
Sorry, I think it just went away.
Yeah, I think he's gone. Um, G A B O R, do you still wanna speak? If, please raise your hand.
Sorry, keeps moving on me.
Yeah, he's there. He's at the top.
Okay, got it.
Thanks. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Hey.
Yo, it's uh Matt. Yeah, you're right.
Matt, yeah, yeah, that's what I thought, Matt.
It's Gabor, like Jaja.
Gabor, okay. You gotta get your full name up there, but uh.
Oh, yeah, that was a default from work, but anyway.
Gotcha. Okay, great. If you could just state your name and address for the record, thank you.
Matthew Gabor, eight seventy-three Waterford Drive.
Thank you. Go ahead.
First, I do want to commend you, Tyler and Tom, for having the Caponies for what you said. Thank you very much. Regardless of the outcome, I think it was very admirable of you to do so. My question for tonight. Actually, I I now have two. It was great to hear that the park situation was brought up, the parks and rec situation. But I do have to say that I disagree that that it's commendable or somewhat um admirable. Of or or a, an example of a good rec field. There are several issues with the fields around town. And I will uh cite some examples. The Broad Street baseball field is completely neglected very badly, even through the baseball season. The lights out in the Summer Hill parking lot were out for a good amount of the football and deck hockey season. There's only one, only one of the complexes have a permanent bathroom, which is Summer Hill, and that's only one, not Summer Hill, DCP. Uh, the others, which probably the most important is Summer Hill, only receives Porta John's. And during football season, that field gets packed, not only with Delran residents, but people from other areas coming to play football. And to me, that reflects poorly on our town, that we can't accommodate them with a good restroom to use while they're here. Finally, the scoreboard for the Delran Deck Hockey Rink in Summer Hill. Was uh, or has been problematic for the last, I'd say, at least three years, finally, with the help of uh. The Joseph and the AA. Uh, we were able to get a new scoreboard this year, but from what I understand, the the Delran officials from the government. Uh, had no, no, no stake in initiating. Or monitoring the situation of the scoreboard and that it was needed to be replaced. And then when we finally received um solicitation from the Joseph, which is awesome. It was pretty much between the AA and the Joseph for the oversight to get that scoreboard implemented. And I think if the township is going to continue to maintain control or own these wrecks. They need to get a better handle on what's actually going on in these fields and rec centers for our children.
Hey, hey, Matt, Matt, just just real quick, um, I just wanna say, we have, I don't know if he's still on the call, but I saw him. Colin Rafferty is the Chair of the RAC, and he um, long and last, I think he's been chairman for a year now, has got. Is taking lead on a uh Fields Committee uh with the administration here, and you know, meeting with the AA, and they're going. I believe Jim, right, you met with him and drove around and looked at some fields. I know um Joe went around to look at some fields, so you know. Listen, we're we're on top of that. I agree, we need to, you know, get a better plan and start to plan, just like, I had a conversation with Jim today. You know, just like we plan our road repairs, right, out in, you know, three, four years in advance, we need to start looking at our. Open space infrastructure and parks in the same way, not just every year, we just pick something out of the blue or every couple of years, you know, we need to start planning, so. Uh, I just wanna make sure you know that that's in the works as we speak.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and on top of that, with open space, there's a a baseball field or what used to be a legacy baseball field. Right off of Tenby Chase that is completely not in use and not utilized. It's sitting there going to waste where we could have one extra practice a night for our children. So sitting there going to waste. Um, my next question is specifically for Councilman Lyon. Uh, prior to the message that was put out there tonight by Councilman Lyon, which was awesome. Um, I was going, I wanted to ask him, I think you were the only dissenting vote on the Dumphy lawsuit. I like, I've been curious to know the meaning behind that, or or what the foundation was for you. To dissent from everybody else when everybody else voted in favor. What was your thinking behind that, Councilman?
I'm not gonna go into the absolute details of it. Um, all I will say is, um, there was a lot to that lawsuit. That was frivolous and was never, ever, ever going to be founded, that we were gonna be found guilty. And it was just my opinion that we should have taken it on, and at the end of the day, it was a policy decision. And I might have been absolutely wrong, and it might have been cost us way more to defend it. I might have been right. I don't know, but at the end of the day, we voted the way we voted, and I hold no animosity, and we did what we did.
That's fair and understandable. Thank you very much for that, and I do appreciate you taking that stand. The rest of my time, thank you.
Thanks, man. Appreciate it. Uh, next up. Uh, looks like Barbara Littleton.
Littleton? Can you hear me?
Yes, you just state your name and address for the record. We can hear you. Yep.
Barbara Littleton, I'm not gonna state the full uh address, as I've said before. Uh, I have had people come out to my house, um, but I do live here, or well, I have a residence here in in Delran. Um, so I I wanna throw something, some kudos out, uh, Green Team. Thank you so much for all your hard work. Um, I also wanna uh congratulate the the welcome group, and I I I wanna throw this out there that. Uh, maybe that would be a good place to have the veteran resources that uh Lynn was talking about. Um, as well as maybe on on the Delran page itself, but definitely having those resources there. And then I was thinking that we could tie uh the Green Team and the Veteran Move to get that Veteran Award together. And maybe dedicate the trees, uh, if we get them donated to us, uh, to the veterans. And maybe have a special ceremony as we do that sort of kind of uh lower key than the quarterly event, but definitely uh just a thought out there. I wanna congratulate Mr. Lyon. I I I don't necessarily agree with you on some of the things that you said. Uh, but I congratulate you on having uh stepped up and and made some comments. Um, I I'm really appreciative of what you said, uh, especially uh. I I don't necessarily agree with the person that you were speaking of. Um, and that he's saying a bunch of stuff for his own personal gain. He, maybe, he may not be. Um, what he has done is brought a lot of stuff to our attention to get us involved in the township. And if for no other reason, everyone on this this council. And every citizen of Delran or any taxpayer of Delran should be appreciative of what he found. Um, regardless of why he found it or or how he found it, um, and the questions are still out there. Uh, so I I just wanna throw that out there, but I do wanna congratulate you. Um. Mr. Jenny, Mr. Smith, uh, if you got the the advice that you got on the Dumphy case. I'm not an attorney, but I am a taxpayer, and it looks like that was a conflict of interest. I mean, you voted one way or another for the Dumphy lawsuit. You were part of the zoning board at the time. Uh, that the use variance was there, and then you voted on the settlement agreement, and in my opinion. Um, that that's a total conflict of interest, so something I would, I would just throw out there for you. Is if you think you need to ask the question, if you should abstain, you probably should abstain. Uh, because there is an appearance, if you have to ask the question, of a conflict of interest, so just throw that out there. Uh, Tyler, really want to applaud you on the comments that you've made. Um, the things that have been happening. The Solicitor not not answering questions when, for the township, um, which it's his job. Uh, we as taxpayers pay his salary through the township, and it's just frustrating when we can't get answers. And he seems to not even care. And the mayor. You talk about trans uh transparency all the time, and you're the least transparent person I've ever seen. You talk circles around things, you're not clear. You don't give the residents the right information. If you would have came forward and said, maybe I screwed up. Maybe I I I should have said something about my my relatives being involved in these companies. That were hired through the township. It goes a long way. That's transparency. You could say I screwed up in the past, and here's what I'm gonna do to fix it going forward. That's what most of us that are talking at these meetings want. We don't want to be the twenty, we don't wanna look back and say what you did wrong. I mean, yeah, i- it's important, but we wanna know where you're going. We wanna know how you're gonna fix it. Yeah, admit to it. When I, when I do something in my job and I make a mistake, I own that mistake. And I I I say, okay, I screwed up, but here's what I'm gonna do so that that doesn't happen again in the future. But I don't see that here. Last week, after everybody got done speaking, the township, and I know it was a a left field ball out of nowhere. The mayor came up and started talking, and nobody got to rebut anything he said. And that was so frustrating, and oh, by the way, he went over his five minutes, so even if he was speaking as a a a concerned citizen. It was over five minutes, and you didn't cut him off, but you'll cut us off, and it's just so frustrating to have that. Um, so a question to you guys. When Dumphy filed his appeal, did you notify the bonding company or the insurance company that he filed that appeal? Did the township notify the the insurance company that he filed that appeal?
It's a question for the administration. Gary or Sal?
Yeah, I'm 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 happy to weigh in, so so the the appeal, it was a prerogative writ action.
Yeah, there was no damages and no, you didn't, right? That's the answer, no.
I'm trying to answer the question.
That's why you didn't.
And I'm trying to answer the question. There was, it was.
But you're gonna take up my time, and it's a pretty simple answer. Yes or no?
The the question goes to Jeff Hatcher. He was the, he was the Jiff representative, whether or not he notified. Is a question for him.
I'm gonna tell you, we've been in contact with the insurance company, and no one notified him. So, or notified them on that, and as much as, and and from what the insurance company is saying is because there was no damages. But you had legal costs. The township paid legal costs for that, so even if there were no other damages. The insurance would have paid the legal cost, but no, we as taxpayers paid that, and I'm not bringing this up to say someone did something wrong. What I'm saying is we need to make better decisions in the future, so that does not happen. We need to make the point. Yes, I know.
If you could just begin to wrap up, it's been seven minutes, so I'm trying to get.
I I will, I I've said enough. I I I I really applaud everyone who spoke out. And those that have been condemned tonight uh really need to take a look at what their actions and and take the best action for the township. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who wants to speak? If you could please raise your hand. This is the last opportunity. All right. Just keep your hands raised. We'll we'll get to you in in order. Uh, Pat, I see you want a second bite at the apple, but we only give one bite, uh, so. Um, Joseph, uh, Joyce. Can you hear us, Joseph?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Floor is yours. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Joseph Joyce, and I live on Kathleen Avenue. I do not wanna give the specific number.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, Tyler, I know I've congratulated you in the past. It was a hard fought election, and the voters spoke. Uh, the speech you gave tonight, I truly admire that. That took a lot of courage. Um, uh, same with you, Mr. Lyons. I don't agree with everything you said, however, you know, the fact that you stood up really says a lot. And uh, that's really all I have to say. I do have one question.
Sure, go ahead.
So, in past meetings, the mayor has stated he has gone to state agencies. And reported himself for an investigation. I have been following people's requests on Oprah Machine. I, to be honest with you, never heard of it before all this, but. It is quite the interesting website. And I've noticed a few requests regarding um him reporting himself to state agencies. I don't necessarily recall which ones. Has that been done?
Okay for me to answer?
Yes, Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, it it absolutely has. It's not through Oprah. I sent a letter, as I said, I would, I would personally report and ask for their opinion on what went on. And I have done that. I sent it directly from uh my home to them, indicated who I was and what um. The activities that were happening, and I've asked for their um, their opinion on that. Uh, but I will tell you this, um, you know, in the, in the let's be transparent situation. Um, it was, it, I was, I was apparently uh late to the game because uh, I guess the end of November. Uh, or maybe early December, Mr. Duff already did that and went to the DCA. Because he got a response back, thanks to Oprah Machine, I've been able to see it on December second. This would be at this point uh, uh, two months ago. So uh, I I will read quick briefly the email that he received on December second. Uh, while he was still uh addressing this council and the residents in his blog and both on the, on the uh resident pages. And it said, hi, Patrick. Uh, the woman's name is out of the office today and tomorrow, and asked that I get back to you regarding your inquiry about Delran Township requirement. Or retirement event. To your first question about dedication by rider. Delran Township has a dedication by rider approval for donations for special events. This retirement event may be considered a special event. Regarding your second question about the DJ at the event, which uh, and as an aside, I'll get back to this. Uh, was not my nephew, was not six thousand dollars. Uh, there was a ten piece band and another disc jockey. Who uh, not by my doing certainly, but by it, the agent that we used outsourced that uh, that job. To get a better price through an agency that, as it turns out, is owned. Uh, that job to get a better price through an agency that as it turns out is owned by my nephew. It was created during, uh, right at the beginning of COVID and I had no idea. I wasn't part of that. I didn't ask for that. But as they said from the Department of Community Affairs, regarding your second question about the DJ at the event. There is no prohibition in the local public contracts law. About using vendors who are related to local government officials. And the $6,000 expense, which was overstated, is below Delran's quote threshold of $6,600. Meaning that no additional qu- quotes are required. So what that means is that it was not illegal nor unethical. As it's being touted, it, it would not have been, even if I knew that it was my nephew or I directed.
Can I just, can I say something here? So I have been watching some of these meetings online and in the past. You stated that. Company. So no, no, because you've changed your story several times.
I have not.
Yes, you have on numerous issues.
Counsel.
Please be transparent.
I, I'm being transparent. This is as transparent as it gets. So, look. If I had directed them to do that, it still would not have been illegal or unethical. I did not. We were busy trying to put together what was going to happen on the stage by way of the program. The agent that was used to book the entertainment on his own, without any indication from me. Has outs- had outsourced that job to another agency to get a better price. Turns out. After the fact, we find out my nephew owns the agency. Will we ever use them again? No. But that doesn't change anything because it was not unethical and it was not illegal. And I did not benefit from it. And he knew that, Mr. Duff knew that on December 2nd. Yet he continued to berate me and my family and, uh, the businesses that are owned by relatives of mine. And he continued to do that, knowing full well that he was lying to you all. That's just the first situation. As we go through these questions, I'll be happy to share exactly what was done. And, and how that would have impacted, uh, you all if he had told the truth. That's my response. Go ahead.
Mister Jo- Joyce, you, uh.
How much time I got left, Tyler?
You're, you're over, but if you just wrap up very quickly, I'll let you get.
Well, again, in conclusion, Tyler, I want to congratulate you again tonight. It, that really took a lot of courage. Um, and it, you know, it is appreciated by the residents. And again, I know I've said it before, but. Uh, you know, congratulations, um, on the position that you won. The voters spoke. Um, as far as transparency, look, uh, I'm going to echo what Pat Pomeran said. We got beaten up. For six months during that campaign over transparency, over a hundred different issues called a million different names. And I'm sure you guys did as well. But don't for a second pretend that you are the victim here.
Say that. Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Appreciate you, uh, hopping on. Next up is, uh, Mr. Duff.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, if you could just state your name and address for the record, floor is yours. Thank you.
My name is Patrick Duff, formerly of eight, 12 Chester Avenue in Delran. Don't want to state my address. You know, it's, it's probably the first time I've ever heard in a council meeting, by the way. More than one person not want to state their address for fear of repercussions. I wonder why that is, huh? That's kind of a strange thing, huh? Never seen that before. Now, Mr. Lyon, you made some comments tonight. I just want to know, who were you talking about? Was it me? Mr. Lyon, was it me you were talking about?
Five minutes. Make your comment.
Mr. Lyon, where's the property that you own that you were talking about having a marijuana business that was interested? Where's that located?
Public comment. Make your comment.
Is, uh, is that the same property that the letter of support was drafted for by the council? Can somebody state, can somebody state the address that the letter of support that was drafted by the, by the, the solicitor? Was, uh, done for?
Mister Duff, Mister Duff, listen. Tom was.
Listen, I was, I was just attacked by Mr. Lyon.
Well, Mr. Duff, you've asked a question.
He's a chicken, he's a chicken.
The question that.
Chicken.
Okay, listen, there's the implication that Tom i- is asking for some sort of application for the township for his property.
Question. I'm asking what the address is that he owns, that he had somebody approach him for. And I'm asking a separate question of what is the property address of the letter of support that the town dra- drafted? Two separate questions. Please answer. I'm holding my time while you.
Hey, hey, real quick, listen, it's no property I own, okay? It's part of an organization that I work for that we were approached and it ain't in freaking Delran.
Uh, Sal or, uh, Gary, do you know the address of the property in question?
I don't have it up my head. We have the letter somewhere. We can, we can produce.
We can provide that at a future date.
I, I can, I can look it up. I mean, if you want me to, it's.
That's fine. We don't have that much time. That's okay.
No, no, I mean, I'll, I'll be looking it up and if you don't mind, I'll.
If you get it, you can report. Yeah, yeah, no, I wouldn't expect it to. Yeah, if you can.
If I can find it, I'll tell you. Yeah. It's on Route 130. I know that.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Duff.
So can, can I ask, I mean, because last week it was stated that, uh, the, the council read into the minutes. The, um, the Dumphy statement and that the minutes reflected the Dumphy statement. I need to read into the record. What the actual minute stated. Do, do, do you want me to read into the record what it states? Because it really.
Mister Duff, I understand what you're trying to say about that. If, if was, if it was made, if I made a comment or any members of council that was fully reflected in the minutes, that was an error. Um, it's.
It was not reflected at all in the minutes. There was nothing reflected in the minutes besides the fact that you read a statement. I just want to read that for the record. And I want to ask, by the way, I want to ask for an extension of time, uh, of, of five minutes for my, uh. My, my, uh, comments due to several factors. Number one, the mayor last week may comment about me. Mr. Lyon just may comment about me. And I need to answer to these allegations that were made. Okay? Let me first start with the, the, the allegation that I am doing this for some sort of money. So for some sort of, I don't make any money from this. I'm doing this for, for, for my own free time. That I'm spending, that I should be spending doing other things. But I think it's very important that people are lying. Not only on the record, but they're, they're having parties, throwing a hundred grand parties, um, you know, trying to figure out how to cover it up. Putting messages out about people who are just trying to ask questions. You know? This whole thing could have been answered real easily by somebody just saying how much the party costed, right? How much did it cost? Um, but that's not what happened. The first Oprah request came back, right? The mayor stated. That so many Oprah requests are coming in costing township a fortune. Well, if you just answered the open Oprah requests honestly, wouldn't cost you a fortune. Let's talk about the Oprah request, Mayor. First Oprah request is a cost of the Carly Lloyd party. You knew the cost when I made the request. It was October 15th. You already had the party. The money was already spent. The, these, the, the township administrator already cut off the, the faucet. To you spending the money and you know that.
Mister Doctor, time's running out, so I'd wrap it up.
I know, I'm asking for an extension of time.
You're not getting. There's no extension of time. The policy applies.
Robert's, Robert's rules say, Robert's rules say I'm allowed to speak twice on the issue. Please, please consult the rules because I'm going, by the way, there will be a lawsuit regarding the Oprah request and I see you laughing.
That's fine, but there's, Robert's rules does not govern. We have our own.
Mister Lyon, who were you talking about? I'm asking Mister Lyon who is talking about in his message.
He's, he's not going to, we've already went over that, Mister Duff. You're not using.
He just came out and in, in public and made a statement, but didn't say who he was talking about. This has.
Your time has expired.
No, I refused that. I refuse that. I'm asking for an extension.
There's, extension is.
I'm asking for a point of order.
Mister Duff, the. A point of privilege applies to the members of the board and the members of, um.
Now, you allowed the mayor, you allowed the mayor to speak for eight minutes last week. Okay, you allowed Mister Lyon to say what he's going to say about me. Please allow me to finish my comments. Give me two more minutes. I'm asking for two more.
I'll give you 30 seconds. You've been talking for six minutes. I'll give you 30 seconds. That's it. And we're cutting you off.
Okay, so, so let's be clear that the reason why Mister Lyon is making these comments. And listen, I appreciate you asking for the, the, the solicitor's resignation. But the fact is, it's the solicitor and the mayor that did all these things. So without asking for his resignation too. You still have the head of the beast that sits there that has caused all these issues. That is the liability for the town. If you do a liability chart.
All right, Mister Duff, your time has expired. There are 30 seconds.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I, I'm going to see you in court. Thanks, Mister Lyon.
Please, Jamie, thank you.
I have the address if you want it.
Please, Sal.
Uh, so there was a letter, January 14th, addressed to the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. The applicant was Larry's Best Buds. Nine thousand six, nine zero zero six, US Route 130 in Delran.
Yep, now that you say the name, it rings a bell. Yes, I did see that come across. Thank you, Sal, for finding that. Is there any other public comment from any members who have not spoke yet? Next up is Wendy Mitchell. Uh, Wendy, can you please state your name and address for the record?
He's muted.
Yes, on mute. Jamie, talking is permitted, right? I see.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, I just want to address the comment about this. This is the first time in history that, uh, residents have. Have spoken during public comment and not wanted to give out their addresses. Um, I just want to mention that due to the occurrences over the last few months. Uh, as a result of these inquiries, uh, this is also the first time, uh, to my knowledge, as someone who grew up in Delran. Graduated from Delran High School and has been, uh, most of my adult life. And I'm not going to get into my personal reasons for why I moved out temporarily. Right now, but I am moving back, uh, that Delran Township Council, the mayor, myself. Our township clerk and all of our professionals have during open meetings when the building was still open. Not because of COVID with this Zoom nonsense. Uh, this is the first time that we have all needed. Police escorts to our cars at the end of meetings. Um, so all of the commentary that's occurred tonight. With people saying, oh, I don't want to give my address. I don't want to give my address either. I don't want to talk about my place of business. Uh, I could not bring my own five-year-old son to Delran Winterfest this year. Because a picture of him was posted on Mister Duff's blog. And the police department and council determined that it was probably unsafe for me to bring my five-year-old son. To an event where he would get to see Santa Claus. That's where we're at. So I'm getting pretty tired of hearing. That we're all afraid of giving our addresses out where I can't walk into a public township event in a town that I grew up in. And I need a police escort to go to my car at the end of a township council meeting. And that's all I have to say. I don't need five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a public comment who hasn't spoke before? Last call. Uh, Jamie, I think we're good to go, right?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, great. Uh, I'll take a motion to close the, for the public comment.
I make.
Um, let's have Lynn and then Marlo, can you second?
Sure.
You can just say second for the record. Great, great. Um, all in favor?
Hi.
Those opposed, motion carries, our floor is now closed. Uh, next up, we have executive session. Uh, Resolution 2022 dash 45 authorizing the executive session to discuss the following contract negotiations. And walking on potential litigation. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second, Tom Lyon.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Uh, Mister Smith?
Hi.
Mister Jenny?
Hi.
Ms. Pareo?
Hi.
Mister Lyon?
Hi.
Mister Burrow?
Hi, the eyes have at the resolution is adopted. We will now go into our executive session. Uh, council has the link to do that. Um, and then if there's any action to be taken, it will be taken in our public portion. Hopefully we'll be back shortly. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And we're on the record. We are back in our public meeting after our closed session. So there's no action to be taken. So entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, should do it, Jared, Tom Lyon.
Second, Lynn Jenny.
Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Those opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned. We will see everybody in two weeks. Have a good night.
You well, everyone.